Mayor Andrews.
Here.
Trustee Schnauffer.
Here.
Trustee Walsh.
Not present.
Trustee Bailey.
Here.
Trustee Hinshaw.
Here.
Trustee O'Laughlin.
Here.
Trustee Wittenberg.
Here.
The other four, Mr. Mayor.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Under the mayor's report, a couple items. First, sadness that I have to report that James W. Byrd, formerly of Indian Head Park, of the Byrd House, our Heritage Center building, passed away on September 16, 2013, in Marietta, California. We owe our Heritage Foundation, Heritage Center Library, Heritage Foundation, to the kindness of Mr. Byrd in working with the village in conveying that property and helping us to preserve it and keep it as an historical place in our village. Also, I would like to, and I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Mr. Byrd, but first I also would like to include, as I'm sure most of us, and some more than, in particular than others in this room, are aware of an anniversary that comes up on October 27th, which is the loss of Kelly Joy O'Laughlin. So I would like to ask that we include her in our memories and thoughts and the O'Laughlin family and relatives and join me in a moment of silence in their honor. Thank you. Trustee O'Laughlin? Didn't talk to you about this before, but can I ask you, are there any events planned, any memorials or whatever?
At this time, we're not sure. And if people get any asking, then we just don't know what they're asking.
Thank you. If you're here to let me know that, I'd be happy to put it on the website.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Announce, if we should have this on the website and the sponsor knows it, that the Board of Trustees will be convening a special town hall type board meeting on Thursday, November 7, 2013, for the purposes of discussing the village's street maintenance, infrastructure, and capital improvements plan in order to help prioritize the projects, determine the amount we can afford and wish to spend, and how to pay for it all. Because our residents' input is valuable to the board, we invite all Indian Head Park residents to attend the public meeting. You'll be here at Village Hall, Thursday, November 7, 2013, 7:30 PM. I have finally gotten a response, and this goes back, I think, to the August meeting, but in connection with us starting to receive impact fee payments from Timber Trails Development in their attempt to honor the outstanding $200,000 amount of impact fee that they had agreed to pay us when the project was in its early stages, we received, it's supposed to be annual $100,000 payments, we received three of those, and then they hit on hard times and actually Dartmore Homes is not the current owner, as I understand it, it's something called Timber Trails Development. But we kept at it, I had council work at it with me in some discussions, and we're getting those impact fees. So I think there was some request of trustees to see if we could get a representative here to be able to ask some questions. They asked that I submit questions so that they could try to answer them, and they chose to respond to the questions in writing. So we have had propounded questions to them that I had come up with on my own, some that trustee Hinshaw provided, and some that trustee O'Laughlin provided. So I'd like to take the time and ask you to indulge with me, I'll read the questions, and I'll give you their answers, which constitutes their response for information about the development. One question. What are current plans for Timber Trails Development? How, if at all, are they different from the original plan approved by Western Springs? Their answer, the plans have not changed since the original development. At this time, it is not our intent to make any changes from the original development. What is the plan for the future build-out of the project under current approved plan? By this I mean, what is going on now? What do you need to do next regarding the development? Decide selling homes? And what is the timeline for your plans? Their answer is, the property is divided into two phases. Phase one, the east portion of the project, which includes 58 townhomes and 73 single families, has been fully developed. We are currently marketing and selling homes in this phase. Phase two, which consists of 46 townhomes and 161 single-family lots, is currently being developed, that is, grading underground utilities and streets. The land development for phase two should be mostly complete in 2014. How many total units, single-family and townhome units, are in the current plan? How many were in the original approved plan? How many units are currently occupied? How many new units are under contract? And how many are left to sell? Their answer, there are 338 total lots, 234 of which are single-family homes, 104 which are townhomes. This is exactly the same from the original approved plan. There are currently 26 townhomes and 28 single-family homes occupied for a total of 54 homes. That would be 78 townhomes left to be, left to close, and 206 single-family homes. There are currently four townhomes and two single-family homes sold, which have not closed. Question, what is the timeframe for completion of the build-out and sale of all the units and the development? Answer, phase one should be complete in the next three years, and phase two will take an additional six to eight years. They are just estimates based upon the current market. Question, how long does it usually take from the time a unit is sold until the purchaser is able to occupy the unit? Answer, depends upon whether the home is previously started. It takes approximately five k's to build a home. What is the price range for single-family homes and for the townhomes? Answer, the townhomes range from the high $300,000s to high $400,000s plus options. The single-family homes start in the lower $500,000s and go to the high $700,000s plus options. Next question is, based on a concern for Indian Head Park residents who live close to Timber Trails as they begin to move dirt around for phase two. There were some, the question deals with issues with the soil, and what is the developer doing about the risk? And there was two things behind that, and that, one is a letter from the Western Springs Village Attorney, and also a co-county lawsuit filed by the developer. The answer is, the development, including both phase one and phase two, was originally remediated pursuant to an approved remediation action plan, which was developed by the developer's environmental consultant and approved by the Village of Western Springs Consultants. Following that, a more detailed question is, with respect to concern for Indian Head Park residents who live close to Timber Trails since phase two is being developed. And the, a letter from March 2012, where the Village, Western Springs Village Attorney expressed ongoing concerns about the Illinois EPA compliance, remediation of contaminated soil, in a co-county circuit court case titled Western Springs One LLC versus Marlin Environmental, Inc. And this, it was alleged that it is going to cost $5 million to remediate arsenic, benzoyl, nitrates, and a bunch of other type of chemicals whose names I won't be getting to pronounce, try to pronounce, including lead and mercury. In the first phase of the Timber Trails development, what work has been done and will be done for the remediation of contaminated soil. The answer to that by saying, we report to the previous answer concerning the environmental plan, but that in addition, the $5 million cost was not just for phase one, but was for the entire phase one and phase two on that site. Question is, what changes, our plan, or plan changes, does the developer have from the original Western Springs PD? Again, their answer is, no changes planned at this time, whether it's sales forecast or sales goals for Timber Trails. Their answer is, that they plan or their goal is to sell 25 to 35 homes per year. There was a question concerning whether the townhomes and the homes are specs or are they sold homes? And they respond that it's a combination of both. Follow-up question concerning dumping of dirt on the property right off of Plainfield Road. Is the dirt contaminated? The answer was, phase two land development requires that additional soil be brought in from off-site in order for the streets to be installed. The dirt coming in is not contaminated? There have been issues with vacant property regarding drinking and use of drugs? What actions are you taking to discourage this behavior? Their answer is, they believe that the Western Springs Police Department is in a better position to answer that question. They have the property marked with multiple no trespassing signs posted, a large amount of fencing installed to deter people from entering. That constitutes our questions and their response, and that's the status report from Timber Trails Development. And that's all I have, under the mayor's report. Next item of business is the consent agenda. And at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which consists of an ordinance establishing the hours of operation in the Indian Head Park Heritage Center land, which precludes use after sunset and before sunrise. Is there a motion?
One question. Do you have it as a heritage, do you have it as a park? You guys have been deemed as parks as far as the average go?
Yeah.
Under the Heritage, Chapter 12.07.
Okay. We need to have a motion, before we can discuss the ordinance, we need a motion, so are you making the motion for that?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Just a second. Made by trustee O'Laughlin, second by trustee Wittenberg. Hand it copy over. Where specifically are you referring to?
It's the title of the section, Park Hours. Okay, go ahead. The reason that that section is designated Park Hours is it just follows from the other sections that have to do with Herohead Point and Black Hawk Park. Those sections are entitled Park Hours, not required, maybe change it to Heritage Center Hours, whatever you want to name the section, it's fine, there's no, it just followed from what prior sections, what format it has.
All right. I myself would like to see it as Heritage Center Hours versus Park Hours, since it hasn't been deemed as a park, or the other is a park.
Probably should be Heritage Center Land Hours, because it's a Heritage Center, I think, that it does.
Yeah. That sounds good.
Okay, so let's, I think, repent and make correction for chapter 12.07. Chair would entertain a motion to amend the draft ordinance by amending section 12.07.010, where it reads Park Hours, to delete the word park and call it Heritage Center Land Hours, and then, well, it's the main title, and then that subsection to read the same way.
I made the motion.
Made by trustee Hinshaw, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee O'Laughlin. All in favor signify, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any of the chairs, the ayes have it, so the draft ordinance has been amended in that fashion. Is there any more discussion during the other chair?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
This is amending the, the rest of the chapter 12, is that right?
Yes.
If possible, in the future, if we could get the old to know where it's been, and I'm okay as it is, but just as a note for going forward.
This is entirely new, new chapter of Title 12. 12.07 is a chapter all by itself.
Okay.
Title 12.
Yeah, if I could get, I guess, all of 12, in this example, all of 12, I don't need it now, but to know what else is in there, thank you. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance 2013-10, ordinance establishing hours of operation for Indian Head Park Heritage Center land, as amended.
I made that motion?
No, there's already been a motion second. Motion is, there's already been a motion. For the amending the section.
It was originally a motion and second, motion by O'Laughlin, second by Wittenberg to pass the ordinance, then there was a motion by Hinshaw, second by O'Laughlin to amend what passed. Now we're back to the first one. Yes, you're back to the first motion, it's the real call.
Please call the roll.
Okay. Trustee O'Laughlin.
Yes.
Trustee Wittenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Schnauffer.
Yes.
Trustee Hinshaw.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next order of business is the financial report for the month ending August 31, 2013. Treasurer, who's second?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight I have the report, as you mentioned, for August of 2013. For the month of August, the village revenues were $370,542.67. The expenditures, $314,999.61. The end of August, in all funds, the village had $1,753,958.70. But would like to point out that it's probably the high watermark, that reflects the real estate collections, with second installment of the 2012 real estate taxes. There's always small amounts that are received afterwards from individuals or property owners that pay their taxes late, but that, this should be the high watermark. There shouldn't be any substantial amounts of real estate taxes until the next year's real estate taxes come in, probably in March.
Any questions or comments regarding the report?
Treasurer Abusa, on that amount you just mentioned, that $1,753,000, some other dollars, like you said, that's a high watermark, so we can't go out and spend that, right? Any idea what of that is spendable, you know, roughly? You know, what else do we have to pay? What other warrants do we have for the rest of the?
Well, that's, that's a good question, but it's hard to give you a really direct answer, because this amount should follow what remains in the budget. So these are the monies that are going to be used. There's still some water revenues and some fee revenues, but this is basically the revenue to operate the village until the next big collection.
Well, I guess, you know, we're talking about the village infrastructure, the roads and whatever, and I'm wondering what of that amount, as an example, if we wanted to use it for infrastructure is available? And I know not full 1.7 million. I assume the water depreciation that we've been doing for a couple of years, of $94,000 a year is in there, so that's earmarked 200,000. You know, I'm wondering what other?
Yeah, if I may, that, that would be a policy decision of the board that's, you know, as you mentioned, it's earmarked for, for water type situations, but if the board so chose to make a change, they would be able to do that, so that amount of money would be available, yes.
Is there a way to find out roughly what is remaining to be paid for the year? You know, how much of that? Again, I'm not looking for an exact dollar, but if I knew that roughly a million of that was something that we could put towards infrastructure as an example, that's different than knowing that we really don't have anything, because we have all these bills coming that we have to pay.
We certainly can measure this up against where we are for the budget, but it's really not that simple. There are certain items that are here that can only be spent for what they were levied for. So even if there was extra in those funds, they can't be transferred out and used for general. And so there are numbers that are within that 1.7 that are tied to other things and couldn't be moved. For example, special parks, that can only be used for special parks. So even if that number, that number was obnoxiously huge, it couldn't be moved for road or water or whatever the case may be.
All right, so if I understand it right, there is about 200,000 that could be used for water, water system, because we've depreciated that over two years.
I think it's been three years, and I think it's, it might be a little bit more than that.
Maybe 250.
That.
So I'm trying to get at, what would be available for roads, maybe more specifically? Is that something that we could get a rough idea?
Well, we certainly can give you what the total amount that was set aside or earmarked for water would be. That, that would not be a problem to come up with that figure. And the other items that are in here, though, we could subtract out the items that are earmarked for special funds, and then the balance can be measured against where the board is, where the, where the village is compared, you know, budget versus actual.
And I'm not suggesting we expand everything, because we probably want to cash reserve X number of months or something, but trying to understand how much of that we can spend. You know, looking at an individual, you get paid at the first of the month, you kind of know what your bills are, you know if you can afford a hundred dollar dinner or not, right? So that's kind of where I'm trying to get. So if you could let me know the water, what might be available for that, and then what might be available for infrastructure, that would be great.
Sure. And Treasurer, if you could take a look at that and give us an idea for our town hall meeting, because that would be something that would be helpful to us for that. A question?
Certainly.
Okay. Also, it occurs to me, in just in terms of, you know, the statement is, we have $1,753,000 and some other hundreds of dollars in all the accounts, right?
Yes.
The ones that are earmarked, that can only go for those purposes.
Yes, correct.
Correct. And this is as of the end of August, which is, by my counting on the fingers, is four months into our fiscal year, and we have approximately, so it's one-third of the way through, and we have approximately a $4 million, a little under $4 million budget, and four months of the way through, we have 1.7 million. We've got two-thirds of the year to go, and we need a lot more money to come up to what we budgeted, let alone the 1.7 that's already there. So I would get it that way. My gut reaction is to say there isn't any money for roads based on what's here, because we need that money just to operate, do the day-to-day things, but there could be some money available, so hopefully.
Rich, out of that 4 million, use approximately water is, if I understand, basically a wash, right? So it's really not four, it's more like three.
Like that?
You know, so.
Just the position? Yeah, no, you're right. But, but then you have to take that money's out of this 1.7 as well.
For the remaining three, right? That we have, or two-thirds of the three, or whatever.
Well, right, well, when you were saying a million seven, there is money in there that is part of earmarked strictly for water.
Oh.
So if you take that out, as you articulated, yes, you're right, but then it's not 1.7, no, it's whatever.
Right. So we're going to get more water built, right? At some point, if we pay.
More tax money from Springfield as well. Trustee Wittenberg.
Just one thing that Frank and I, as part of the meeting, with Ed and trustee Bailey, discussed having scenarios presented for that meeting, that would include potentially some financial information, so maybe you could dovetail a little bit with our discussion about where we get the money, whether we get those facts from Steve, who can, we can parlay that into our scenario building that we're prepared to show on Ed and Bailey.
If I may, Frank and I have worked on that this week, and should have, we have a little bit of information on it now, and hopefully have some more.
Yeah, that's all, that's great.
Yeah.
So I think this dovetails into, is there money, you know, the question, is there money? How much money? And then how would we build that into our scenarios that we will provide to the community? And then we can take discussion about that, whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, or what impacted us on our operations, and what impacted us on our future operations.
Anybody else? Carry on, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the financial report as of August 31, 2013, as presented by Treasurer Abusa. Moved by trustee Schnauffer, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Bailey. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any of the chairs, the ayes have it, we have motion to carry. Financial report is approved. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the board meeting minutes from the regular board meeting of September 12, 2013. Are there any corrections or additions on any of the first three pages? Page four or five? Six or seven? Eight? Nine or 10? 11 or 12? 13? 14 or 15? 16 or 17? 18? Or 19? Carry on, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of board trustees for September 12, 2013, as presented. trustee Bailey, second.
Second.
Second by trustee O'Laughlin. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any of the chairs, the ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Okay, agenda items. First order of business is 65th Street. By way of background, as you may recall, in, at the, at the board meeting of June, we had on the agenda a possible intergovernmental agreement with the township of Ryans with respect to repaving 65th Street, and the offer at that time was a willingness by the township to split the repaving costs of that section of street from Flow Springs Road, basically blocked in to the west, and it cost me about $30,000 that they could split, and we would pay $15,000. We're discussing it at that time and determined that, since no Indian Head Park resident directly accessed it with a car, although we acknowledge that there are people who walk along there, that come through occasionally and out that way, the discussion was with respect to the street portion for vehicle traffic, that if the township didn't want to take it on and pay for the whole thing and fix it up for the residents that are unincorporated co-county Ryans township, that we would just assume close it rather than pay the money, where we don't have money for our streets that our residents do have driveways directly onto. And that was the decision that was made, and I was requested to send a letter to the township to explain that to them, which I to explain that to them, which I did. Followed up with a conversation with township through their supervisor, who asked them for some time to look into it. The idea last June was, they were getting ready for their summer 2013 paving project, and if they would be added, they needed to do it in short order.